Good evening. Could we please stand for the pledge if you are willing and able to? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd ask that we remain standing, please, in memory of Gabriela Ivic, who passed away peacefully in her home after a two-year battle with cancer. She was a member of the Clinton Adult Learning Center's family for 22 years. Thank you. This is the February 22 meeting of the Clinton Public Schools School Committee. This meeting is being held both in person and remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Section 20. This meeting is available to the public here and via Google Meet technology. Could we begin with a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion having been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the bills? Being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of February the 8th?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Any discussion on those minutes from the 8th of February? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. As we have done in the past, we've moved public comments to after our learning model update, and that has served both us and, I believe, our public well, so we'll continue with that practice. Dr. Meyer, do you have an update for us?
Yeah, so I think it's been very positive the last few weeks. Our most recent data that came out on the 18th had us down to a 5% positivity. Average daily cases of 29.4. We were just on the cusp of being yellow. I think if we would have been 4.99, we would have been yellow. So we're, you know, I talked to Board of Health this morning. We are anticipating most likely being yellowed this week, which is great news. It also has some other implications for us of what we can do for a bus, for transportation. So I think, you know, if you look at the graph, you can start seeing it's coming down. And you can see right around when we, you know, had to make our switch there towards the end of October, things started climbing, and now they're coming back down. And now we're back kind of getting that other side of 5%. So, you know, it's time for us to bring students back in, which is our plan. So, you know, it's been a steady trend. It's been a few weeks since we were here. So as, you know, we've dropped from, you know, we had those few weeks over, you know, up over 10%, and we dropped down to, you know, the 7.89, 6.32, and now 5. So three weeks in a row under 10%, and hopefully heading towards, trending towards yellow. As far as what is our plan moving forward, well, the Board of Health recommendation, I guess is the next thing on here. The Board of Health recommendation is to continue bringing more students back to school at this point. And talked to the Board of Health this morning, and, you know, the decision, the recommendation is to go ahead and return back to the hybrid plus model like we had discussed at our previous meeting. They're supportive of that still based on the data. So I think, you know, the plan would still be, starting Monday, March 1st, we would go back to the hybrid plus model, which is still sort of that shortened day a little bit, but all students in all grades would come based on their green or gold cohort. So I believe the March 1st would be the gold cohort, and then March 8th would be the green cohort. So all students would be able to return to school on that hybrid schedule starting March 1st. In terms of vaccination updates, you know, we don't really have, I don't really have any further information on vaccinations at this time. We were able to, through the, I think it was through the VA, we were able to send some list of names if we had staff who were veterans that were interested in getting the vaccine. We were able to do that through the DESE, and so we did submit that. We had a couple staff members who indicated that they had veteran status and were interested in it. So we completed that survey to pass that information on. As far as pooled testing, so we're planning on piloting the pooled testing this Wednesday, February the 24th. We did send it out, sent out the consent form last week. I haven't seen the most recent updates. I think we were at about maybe 100 kids or so in each building so far, you know, around there. So it's still probably only, probably only have consent forms for about, you know, maybe 25% of the population, something like that. But we'll continue to work on that as we go through. You know, I think Wednesday is really going to be sort of a pilot of this. You know, obviously, we don't have all the kids back. We only have those certain grades, so smaller numbers. But we want to go through and make sure that we can go through the process and figure out, you know, what works and what doesn't work. Some of the questions we've been getting on the pooled testing is what happens if there is a positive. So essentially, what they, the guidance has said is if there is a positive, what we're supposed to do is basically, don't treat anyone positive yet. You don't treat anyone as positive until they've been positive on the follow-up testing. So if there are like, you know, if we find out that five students were in a pooled sample, and then the sample came back positive, we don't immediately assume all five of those kids are positive. What we do is we then, we bring, you know, they come back to school the next day, or if we find out that morning or whatever, we can do the follow-up testing. Once we identify who the positive student is, then we follow our procedures we've been following all year as far as identifying close contacts, doing the contact tracing and those types of things. Now, depending on how the pools are constructed, it might be likely that regardless, once we know that that pool has a positive, that you're either the positive or you're going to be a close contact just because that's the nature of your pool, if it was done by like an elementary classroom, let's say. But that's not necessarily, it doesn't have to be that way, and we'll see how that plays out as we go through. That's sort of how we're planning on doing it, is trying to go classroom to classroom. But with some of the different classroom sizes and sample sizes, we'll have to see exactly how that works out.
Hey Steve, just a quick question?
Yeah.
Within the process though, is, once you have a pool that comes back positive, is there a defined time of which then that secondary test happens? Like it's within a day, 24-hour like maximum, like, so, you know what I'm saying? Because if you know that the pool is positive, you certainly wouldn't want the follow-up to be a day, two days later.
Right, yeah. So I think the intent is, depending on when we get the lab results, that we would do the testing either that day or the next day.
Cool.
Yeah.
Sorry, follow-up to a question. We're doing the follow-up testing? That's not on the individual? That's not on the family?
Correct. We have the Binax Now follow-up testing that we can do as our secondary one. Now, I don't know if they still, you know, I don't know if after that they still refer you to say, you know, go see your physician and get a PCR test or anything like that. But they are saying that they're comfortable through the research now that if you do, if you've, if there's been a positive sample through the testing of the pooled testing, and then you follow up with the Binax Now testing, and you're able to confirm with a positive, they're comfortable that that's considered a positive test. So we'll be able to do the follow-up testing right in-house through our nurses, yeah.
And I want to be clear, I think that's fantastic, you know, that we can keep it internal and provide that service for families. That's great.
So we're hoping we don't have to do too much follow-up testing. But we do have all the materials, they're all in. Chris, who's going to give us an update later tonight, has been working with the, Chris Tahan, that our new technology directors were working with. Concentrix are our partner, and they've been, you know, he developed the online consent form for us and trying to get all the process for scanning in all the samples and all that type of stuff that we need to do. So we should get that piloted, like I said, this Wednesday. In the future, we're going to try to move the testing date to Tuesday. So the plan is next week to do testing on Tuesday the 2nd. The reason is because they tell you you got about 48 hours for the turnaround. So we'd like to do it on Tuesday so that we should have ample time between, you know, Thursday afternoon or Friday morning to do the turnaround, the follow-up testing. It might be tight this week, but we wanted to pilot it. We wanted to get it going this week as soon as we could just so we could, even if all we did is learn some lessons and we figure it out for next week. So our proposed plan, like I said, right now, what's definite is on, you know, unless you guys want to change anything, is that we would bring everyone back to the green and gold hybrid plus model starting March 1st. There has been some change to the transportation guidance. I did not include it in here, but basically, they've essentially kind of lifted the cap on the elementary buses. And they have said that if you're not in a, if you're in a green or yellow community, you can, you can go to two per seat, two per seat for the middle and high school. So that'll have an impact on our ability to get more students here. I think our plan is most likely to try to go back to the fuller day, the full day schedule, kind of like we had in the beginning of the year, not the normal one from last year, let's say, but the full hybrid day that we were running in the beginning of the year. It still has some tiers of busing, probably in the middle to late March. So we're looking at probably doing a cycle of green, a cycle of gold, or I guess it's gold and green in the beginning of March, and then trying to prepare so that shortly after that, we can probably make the switch to go back to the longer days. Incorporating lunch back in. And then I think that the, you know, the next phase would be hopefully in April at some point, whether it's, you know, middle of April or after April vacation or whenever that is. But sometime in April to try to look to see, now that we've got some freedom with the transportation, once we can get maybe the nicer weather and try to start using the outdoor space a little more again, looking at the possibility of bringing every kid back every day again. Or at least some sort of version of what a lot of schools are starting to call sort of like a parents' choice model, where every kid that wants to come every day can come every day. Or if you want to stay home for remote, you can stay home for remote. You've just got to let us know it's your choice. So, so looking at that, so, you know, my hope is that we can get everyone, all the grades coming back in for the shorter days here on the first two weeks of March, and then hopefully stretch those days back out for the end of March and then maybe beginning of April. And then hopefully sometime in April, we can hopefully open it up even more and start getting kids in here every day. That might be, might be wishful thinking, but that's what I'm hoping. So we'll go from there. I think one thing to note is that, you know, we've had a lot of questions about the shorter days. There are kind of two purposes for the shorter days. One is from the standpoint of the lunches. The other standpoint is it gives us time during the afternoon where all students are remote, and it provides more opportunities for the teachers to try to focus on the whole class remotely so that those students who are not learning in person can have more dedicated access to their teacher. So that's another part of this sort of phasing it in this way, is we want to, we want to see how this balance of the kind of synchronous teaching goes, sort of what we've been seeing last couple weeks with these, with the four grades we let in. Now we're going to kind of see it on a bigger scale, and then hopefully from there we'll be able to transition, like I said, to the full days, and then hopefully eventually bring everybody back. It'd be, you know, personally, I'd love it if by April, you know, if we could get, if we could have every kid coming to school every day after April vacation, that would be great. That would give us two solid months of school really to, you know, we get out, you know, June 23rd or something. That would give us basically almost two solid months of school to end the year, which I think would be great.
Hey Steve, quick question?
Yeah.
I think we had talked about probably a few meetings back now because it took a little while for the numbers to come down. I think we did a survey about talking about what the hybrid model would look like moving forward based upon feedback that we had received. Is there anything that we can share that we've talked about around just like curriculum and what the day would look like? Is it going to be that, sort of it is today where you have teachers that are streaming out, you know, someone like my son and the groups that are at home, but their high needs kids are in the classroom? Right. Do we anticipate that will be basically the experience where teachers will continue to do that, but now they'll have green in the classroom and gold will be home? Or do we anticipate an influx and increase back to like the ingenuity model that we had experienced early on? Do we know what that looks like?
So the goal is to try to keep it the way we have it right now.
Okay.
So that it is kind of like you're saying where there's going to be that part of the class kick it off, where like everyone's online, we're going over the lesson, we're talking about what we're doing today, and then it might kind of break out a little bit here and there to do some work, or they might come and then come back. Like you said, kind of like they're doing now where most teachers may only have their high need students in front of them, but now they're going to have high needs and the gold cohort while the green cohort and remote learners are home, right? So, and that's part of that balance that I think we need to figure out how that works for those two weeks where we have sort of the shorter days. Because at least with the shorter days, we know in the afternoon, everyone's remote, so they can check in with everybody and handle that. And then from there, hopefully, once we kind of find our way with that, then we can say, okay, let's lengthen this out a little bit. Let's stretch the whole day again. And then, and then once we get back to that, then I think, then I think, you know, if the numbers keep trending down, if we get some movement on teacher vaccinations, you know, as all those things start playing out as we get into April, you know, I think if we're just trying to get kids in every single day, it's going to make everyone's life easier because, you know, now you're kind of back to almost normal school where you're here.
No, I've heard a lot of positive feedback, which is why I asked. I mean, the teachers have been doing an awesome job. The kids have been happy. They're doing really well. So, you know, kudos to them because it's been working.
All right, so that's pretty much my...
Any other questions for Dr. Meyer on the learning model? Do we have any comments? Any public comments?
So I had a comment from Jennifer Eldridge, said I'd like to know what the longer-term plans for getting all students who'd like to attend in-person school back full-time for attending full days every week. And then she wrote "thank you" after that, so I think maybe, I think I kind of answered that question, hopefully. We are targeting, hopefully, you know, around April to do that. So it says, "Can you speak to why Clinton is choosing to drag out the process of getting all kids in every day, all day, versus other towns with similar or even higher rates that are already back in? I'm just struggling with the reasoning behind the choice for our town." That was from Robin Adelman. Like I said, I think right now, you know, we're trying to bring every single kid back in for hybrid. I don't know of many towns that are around us right now that are bringing kids in other than hybrid.
No.
We do so have the shorter day. I think I kind of explained that where we're trying to work it with the hybrid model, but we are looking to try to phase that out as we can. Are there certain criteria the district, so this is Melissa Lejoy. "There's certain criteria the district are using for deciding when to do the full-day hybrid, especially given the positivity rate continues to drop in the bus transportation for school." CES parent. So I think, you know, is there a specific criteria on when we go to the full-day hybrid? I don't think we necessarily have a specific criteria set. I do think that, you know, we're anticipating we're going to be in the yellow. I think once we're in the yellow, we need to start making moves to get in that direction. So I think that, you know, like I said, I think we can anticipate probably mid-March to the end of March, somewhere in there, whenever we feel we can gather the information as far as, you know, who's coming back, who's not coming back, all those types of things. Once we have all that, once we kind of live through this first green and gold cycle, we'll know more about what that next adjustment is going to be. So I think really from, you're talking the first two weeks of March, it's going to be that hybrid plus, the green gold cohort, then the green cohort. And then you're looking at probably the middle of March or right around then, you could expect that we probably have some adjustment to a longer day. And then, once we kind of have that adjustment made, hopefully, as the, as the weather improves, as maybe vaccinations get moving, we can look to try to get every student in every day sometime in April. I think that's everything for the public comment, so I think we're good.
All right. We'll officially close public comment now. Thank you. And move on to your superintendent's report.
Okay. So the first thing we have is a technology report. This is, you know, we try to kind of give some updates on things like the, you know, strategic plan and those types of things each time. We didn't put, they didn't put the strategic plan goals for technology in here yet because, or this update, because honestly, at this point, we've surpassed a lot of those, a lot of those goals, and I think that's one of those things we're going to have to sort of reset. But with Chris Tahan, our new technology director, I guess he's our technology director. I should stop using the word "new." He's been, came on board in December, so he's had an opportunity to kind of get his, do sort of his preliminary investigation here. So we wanted him to sort of share, share his findings and his update and some of the, some of the goals. So Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for being here.
I wanted to start today, like, again, I don't want to kind of curtail everything, but it was kind of, I mean, that'd be exactly what I'm looking for. Pretty simplistic looking at it, but, you know, it's really pretty deep dive into what I wanted to provide to you. You could kind of see my vision and see how I think, see how I approach, and how I look at education in our school. Again, it's very simplistic. We look at all the moving parts, really, in the classroom and outside of the classroom. The interesting thing about the size range, one thing that doesn't work without the movement, it's always between, it's always movement, but again, the money area lacks at all times. When everything's moving, everything's moving. So this is really in a nutshell, you know, my focus, you know, for Clinton Public Schools. Trying to make a lot of hardware infrastructure, to, or to run some digital learning applications. The things that we decided to do again today, to mentor our students, for our students to learn visually, to continue using our knowledge of A, not necessarily, not necessarily. As Dr. Meyer mentioned, I've been here for a few months now. I'll take a good look at each of our school buildings, see where we're at, see what we're doing, see how we're doing things. Really set priorities on how we're going to do the next few years, what we're looking to do. I labeled out some of the expectations that I have, that I envision for how we want things to go. These tech places up online all the time, the internal access versus the outdoors. I believe all that starts with communication, cooperation, strategy, those are the tools that we're going to look to set forth moving forward. Again, I thought through the inventory, these four hundred page building, you can see, you know, where we're at, hardware, software. Some of the things that we're looking to do over the next few months. We filed a re-rate application with the state at the end of January. We're looking to make upgrades for our infrastructure, pretty much all of our school buildings. We're looking to kind of eliminate the single points failures from our, some of our internet service provider, etc. And hardware, etc. in each building. Also included with that eighteen-month snapshot is we're going to continue our one-to-one voice-versus-speech at the time. Continuing to protect the environment, the property, the stuff, the higher cost of, you know. So I have the papers, obviously, two students who are going to join us will pan in that side of school. We would imagine repairs that we try to do on a day, on a daily basis. Pretty much seen it all, that's seen it all, the management, the, 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 the. Continued to rework, except for these policies, we can see the change, the, 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 the. I have like, to develop a community committee. I think that community should be made of, not just administrators, teachers, staff, personnel, maybe even students who work on that. We kind of find out where we are, what we can, what we need to do better, things that are working, things that aren't working, you know, things that we can improve to make, you know, share and contribute for technology development. There's the veteran community that we're learning, our students. Obviously, part of that is the class of needs ongoing, progressive development. A big thing going around is training for all our day-to-day schools and go over the S and E's. Online security training, spotting email phishing, maybe trying to eliminate viruses. I think that that needs a little, and it is unfortunate, but day-to-day spaces is a huge target for that type of training. We see it day in and day out, some of the data goes a lot of the ways. Email, you know, weighing on some possible fractures, things of that nature. Well, another big item on the list is new student integration system. So I had the privilege of creating a white hat as well as coming up. It's limited in what you can do, so we're looking to expand our SIS possibilities. Looked out at Meyer today. We're looking to try that process in the late summer of the year. We're going to, you know, full mode, start from twenty twenty to twenty twenty, so we're trying to make sure we get our desks in a room, we get our meeting place. We may exit that with best practice for us, but for our teachers, staff, our students, our parents. You know, buying the lease of the SIS, seeing what's on the same, that we do. It's a knowledge, you know, the area, and, because it reaches, it's literally, that's involved with a lot of schools. I thought we need to rerate, we're talking about the structural updates, to prioritize internet access, to cover the density of the building, pan across speeds with continuity between devices and terminals. The other thing I do want to touch upon, you know, we've had some a focus on real learning, the use of making sure that students have internet access, not just in the school buildings, but outside the school buildings. So we were fortunate enough to apply for a grant early January, and we were awarded that grant in January. It's a project ten million for T-Mobile, so, that couple schools was awarded just another grant of cosbots. Free charge, free data for that, so I, so we'll not only give to a lot of students internet access that's on the need, but if they don't have it, it's a pressure to get that, not just for the total prices, but ongoing over time. I think that is pretty important, to both students and to our bulk schools.
Yeah, Dr. Meyer mentioned that. Thank you for the initiative to apply for that, and congratulations. It's, I'm sure that'll be great benefit to our community.
Yeah, no, it certainly grew as, you know, like I said, the outgoing one-to-one appointments, a lot of students, they have the opportunity to continue their, you know, their learning apps, you know, based on the cosbots. The next full invited item is digitalizing what we do, providing, recently, online consent forms that were created a few weeks ago. We like, obviously, to stand that as a great effort, we do, when they, you know, they're off the panel, and you, you know, have a brand. This building to that building, kind of digitalize everything. Daily attendance, development, we're deciding on payroll, things of that, very doable. We're looking to probably, in the current, have something certain pushing to do. New website, so the process has started a few years ago. I've been contacting the website provider, and they sent some screenshots, some changes that they've done to make it more friendly or user-friendly. So it just doesn't work if you go on your desktop computer, access it on mobile phone, or behind that. Things will look normal, and be more, you know, get raised a few, a lot of better platforms on our website. So that's something we're looking at. And my last full invite is, you know, continue the web-based platform, get away from Windows. So I'm a big believer in web-based applications, you know, there's no reason, you know, I'm not surprised that the problem for the first time, and I'm not just talking here, the consumer upsillibed this year. The only biggest seller was a Windows-based platform, desktop, laptop, the problem, second highest in retail. They can't have this complete, love, or, outside of price, there's certainly a reason. Future has been able to be web-based applications, web-based. Is basically the giants, the tech giants decide that they're going to do all the heavy computing, all the heavy data on their end, and basically what the thing behind it is, we can get it online, and access those things. Of all things, the rig one, everything was priced the same, I'd still choose the web-based version. I was able to see motor job on a problem six years ago. I knew that, you know, this was, this is the way in the future. I knew that, you know, this was, this is the way in the future, if we see a lot of decisions, we're going to have twenty, surround schools, and just choose, or, or, so, so, this, uh, is.
Are there any questions from the board?
I, I just had a couple of questions, when, when you're, when you, um, mapped out this proposed network landscape, which is a great visual, so I appreciate that, um, the additions that you had made to the infrastructure, from a budgetary standpoint, are we talking, I don't think it's anything we had in the budget for this year, is it something that we're looking to do a capital request for, like, at, at town meeting, or, has that been decided?
No, so, so, we've had conversations with the, with your contractors, the highest supplier, and, uh, so, we've had a ton of discussions, how unhappy I am, so, the product setup, and how we'd like to possibly remove single points of failure, right line of structure, right now, it's, uh, so, if we have any type of cross, that'd be turned to the fact that the elementary school at the same time, so, the idea is to move it from that level. So, our initial discussions, the contract amendment that they sent me last week, we'd be able to provide the elementary school direct line, so they wouldn't be relying on middle school, that'll actually decrease our costs, our yearly costs, because of the cost of that least line, that's running from the middle school all the way over to the elementary. So, initially, we're willing to separate the middle school from the elementary schools, the elementary school will be on its own, and rely heavily on the middle school, high school, it might be a five, a little bit closer, it might be more consistent, and then, maybe next year, a year after, we're looking to possibly putting a car line into the high school, so. I never want to go down, right, I never want to have a day where I come in and we don't have, uh, accessible, because if, if we come in, there's no internet access, that messes up.
Oh, sure.
Across the, not just students, staff, veterans, staff, guidance, our administration, everything we can add is on the line. So, looking, looking for ways that we can add comparison without necessarily increasing our yearly bill, is one of the things.
Oh, okay.
For this year, specifically, adding that comparison over the elementary school will actually decrease our cost, because of the high price we pay right now to have prices, that formerly middle school, you know, that's.
Okay, and then, you did mention that a new, um, SIS system, if iPad, you know, I understand different technologies, so they don't, there's probably a lot more out there since we, we got iPass, but is there, is there a dollar figure ballpark on that, or what we're looking at, if we do decide to change?
Yeah, so, um, so, whatever you're going to make a switch to a new SIS that first year, is going to be the most transparent, important, but it's, they're going to build it in, in very, very few costs, but the year-over-year cost is actually pretty quite similar to what we're paying for, so, again, we've had some initial conversations, and we got Meyer, maybe, I started this process, probably, we want to figure it out now, and then, loaded hit, kind of, pushed everything back, and then, when I started this, the center of our team, people, schools, we said, well, we're sort of looking at this now, kind of mapping out where we're going to be, again, having such an influx schedule, and, you know, our teachers already dealing with that, they need to deal with, some listeners, and stuff like that, we made the decision that, we weren't, let's start the process, make a decision, start the integration sometime a year from now, and then, the question we will, we'll have next year, and we'll apply.
So.
The, the other thing, though, I just want to point out, that, with the conversations of the possibly SIS, there are ways we can balance out that first year cost, or next year, here's, if we, I think, within the budget.
The additional SIS, uh, cost was captured in our preliminary budget, so it is in our preliminary budget right now, for this year, that, that kind of double cost, now, that's something, because it is more of a one-time expense, maybe we could look to try to capture it in one of the, one of the grants, if, if it's, uh, a permissible expense, and then we could go ahead and look at something like that, but, uh, it is in the preliminary budget right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
You may have already answered this, I just have.
Oh.
Hi, I'm on now. Um, you may have already answered this, but I may have missed it, um, just looking at the Wi-Fi coverage, the high school and middle school both have ninety to a hundred percent, what is, why, what is going on at the elementary school?
Yeah, so, um, that number is, is based more or less on, that is, so, when I'm going through my book, when we're going for a lot, we're basically marking out, now, there all the, and then, we're basically looking at the data, seeing how those access points, how they, where they come, how they come, the density, which they, it's basically, you know, that access point support the classroom next door, was it ten users, fifteen users, thirty users, we kind of make our determination, but the week devices, for a year, we're full one-to-one, in this district, I'm guessing that the need for Wi-Fi, contrary years past, probably see a lot of those, we do have gaps at our elementary, at our elementary school. It doesn't mean that students can't get online from day to day, it just may mean that the experience of getting online, the speeds of the company, or, again, that city, that one access point maybe taken on, but as the day to day, the access point, say, full classroom, we're looking to add, as we see, so, for the last few weeks, we've had, then there's seven and a half hours for our re-rate pilot, have a little wire, see if we can, then we can do, and, uh, again, you know, our goal is, like I said, whether you're on first floor, I mean, first floor, I mean, the basement, the elementary school, whether you're on fourth floor, you know, for all that, you know, for the people on first floor, we'll have that same, whatever.
I think you, you quantified it earlier today when we were talking, I think, wasn't it, like, um, there might be, like, fifty hotspots in there now, or fifty access points now, and we want to probably get up to, like, eighty to have full coverage.
So, based on, based on the maps that, that we're making, we estimate that we need eight access points in that building, approximately, so we'd be able to, and thirty-seven access points to that building, and then, and then, I'd be much more comfortable with the online experience for our students.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
No, I just think it's exciting, right, I mean, you know, three years ago, when we were initially starting conversations about, you know, tech committees, and how to get one-to-one, and how to bring technology, and fundamentally change the way the kids learn, um, it was like, how are we going to get there in X amount of years, you know, COVID accelerated everything on everyone, and I think Dr. Meyer and the team have just done a fabulous job trying to figure out where funding we've been allotted can fit the plan, but can also fit to support COVID, that's accelerated what we had thought might be a shorter-term window, it's allowed teachers to adopt technology where maybe they might have been a little bit hesitant or scared before, and are realizing how, you know, it does change fundamentally the way the kids learn, and it's easier on everyone, so for someone who sells software, I'm super excited about the opportunity for technology and where we're going, and I just, I love the review, right, because it's, it's how we're going to get where we need to be, so I think it's super exciting.
Yeah, and I just want to say, too, the teachers, it's better, that's all, also more, I came into this, you know, in the interviews, they tell me, well, most of our teachers don't use Windows devices, you say that against me, because, in my life, you know, I had a five-year plan, you know, removing Windows PCs with a desktop, desktop, part of that plan, so, you know, I get teachers, you know, you know, rip my throat out, you know, we were so used to using a Windows space, and then coming here, these teachers have all the data, they have all the data so quickly, just having to come into my office and say, look, look, we, we're doing, it's truly amazing, credit, you know, you know, they're sitting out just for their belief in data, and to learn, and to do that kind of, you know, in-person, their own, so, it's not his responsibility.
That's great, thank you.
Anybody else?
I, I just concur with my colleagues up here, I, I'm appreciative of all of your efforts, and, and, you know, the leadership that it has taken, uh, in supporting Dr. Meyer, and the school district's vision for technology, and, and the work ahead, I, you know, I'm thrilled to know that, um, that you and your department have not lost sight of, um, the, the security needs, that as technology continues to grow, so does the responsibility to, um, keep it safe, and to help students and staff understand their, their digital footprint, and, and so, uh, well done.
Thank you. All right, and our next topic is the athletics update, athletic update, particularly talking around the, uh, the fall two floating season, um, I mean, I would, I, the only thing I would say to, to start this off, I think that our, our winter season went, um.
You stole my thunder, I was going to say, congratulate Mr. Smith, and, and the coaches, and everyone involved with the, what I think all of our examples point to, a very successful winter season, is that what you were going to say?
Yeah, and I think, um, I think it all came together, I think even, even the, you know, you see so many comments, I feel like, of, of people who, you know, people in other towns and stuff, who, who, when they'd watch our games with our commentators and everything, that, you know, we were doing such a nice job with the live streaming, and, and I think it really all came together, and followed the plan, and followed the protocol, and I think we got, we got every single game in, and, uh, I think we're all done tonight, right, wasn't that the last one tonight?
Yeah, we just finished one.
Yeah, so we're all, all done now, it's officially in the books, and I think it was, uh, you know, for all the concern, uh, I think when you look how successful it was, I'm just really glad we were able to give, give those kids that opportunity, and, and I think, you know, we can build upon that, and I think that that's, you know, transitioning now, I think more towards the, the fall two, or the, the season coming up, um, you know, I think in conversations, when I was talking to Board of Health this morning, uh, they had, uh, talked to, uh, Mr. Smith, and, and reviewed the plans, and, and the, the document that you guys have with the protocols from, from our league, and, uh, they were supportive of moving forward with, uh, with the fall two season for football and cheerleading, and they said that, you know, especially, and part of that is the, the credibility now because of how, how the, how the winter went, so, um, you know, I think, obviously, there'll present some challenges, some unique challenges, in terms of maybe potential weather, um, I know that we've been, uh, specifically working on, um, you know, arrangements with Nishoba, we've got some sample, uh, kind of contracts with them, um, they're, you know, they're very, very fair and supportive, um, and we've been working on just getting that taken care of with, you know, details like, uh, insurance, liability waivers, and that kind of stuff, so, um, but that should be fine, so it looks like we should have, hopefully, access to, to the, to the field at Nishoba if we need it, for practices, for at least one practice a week, and, and game days, if we, uh, if it becomes necessary for that, um, or if, I would imagine it might be necessary for that early in the season, it might not be as the season goes on, and we approach, approach April. Um, so I know at our last meeting, uh, the idea was to, uh, go forward and allow, kind of doing the registration, uh, I know that that's been going on, I know technically the practices could have started today, but we wanted to meet today and kind of review this final information, um, so, you know, I don't know if you guys have, I know, uh, Mr. Smith and Coach Ball are here, um, if there are any questions that you have, um, we can certainly, uh, go through anything we need.
No, I, I appreciate, um, you and Mr. Smith, and, um, sending out the information, we had, you know, essentially given approval to get started with this, pending the additional information, and again, the, the information that we've received, uh, regarding the fall two season is copious, so, I, thank you for all of your hard work. Um, would anyone like to make a motion to move ahead with, uh, the fall two season?
I'll make the motion to move ahead with, uh, sandwich season, shall they say?
I'll second.
Motion hadn't been made and seconded, any discussion, or any questions for Mr. Smith or, or Coach Ball?
I do have a question, I, I know we tell our kids, there's no such thing as a stupid question, so I hope I'm.
No, no, no.
Okay, how are, how are we going to play football on, on the snow, like, the fields are all snow now?
So, Keith, so our facilities has plowed a little bit of an area for us, do you use on the side practice field?
Uh, next to the high school here?
Yeah.
I saw that, yeah.
So, we're going to be able to use that area, we're also, um, we can also, we also plan on using parking lot space if we add to that area, that's the money and cost save for the kids, we thought we would plan, because we can still have, um, twenty-five players on player service in the gymnasium, so we can probably, you know, we, if we went out having a JV team, I don't know what the numbers are going to dictate if we ever got, if we start off the younger, the gymnasium, Barstee's, Barstee's outside, we can switch them up that way, and, uh, whole wide space for them.
Okay, all right.
So.
You can use the left one.
Always.
I think, so I think, for the most part, um, you know, practices are going to look different than they have probably before, and I know Coach Ball put together a sample practice plan, and, and some things like that, and, uh, but, I think, using the, using the, um, the parking lot space, as you mentioned, the, the area over here that they've been trying to kind of clean off a little bit, hopefully that'll get some melting more, uh, Wednesday this week, when it's supposed to get up to forty-eight, and, uh, like we mentioned, um, you know, we're, we're looking at securing the, working on, you know, it seems like we pretty much have an agreement with Nishoba at this point, that we're going to be able to use their field for, for, for the games, if we need them, and along with that, at least one practice a week, so our team can go practice on the game field, um, prior to, so, so I think we should be, you know, there'll be, it'll be a mix and match, but I'm sure they'll, football coaches always find a way to get a practice in.
We'll do it.
Any other questions?
So, I just got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know you and Steve spoke about it earlier, and Smitty, you know, with the, uh, with the winter sport, I know you and I had talked, you know, getting, it starts obviously with, with Steve and, and principals, but now through the athletic, they're down to the coaches, and I know Steve just said it, it's, the season looked different, but we wouldn't have been able to keep playing that season if the kids didn't sacrifice, and their parents, you know, there's no pizza parties, no, you know, all that stuff afterward, and I, I wish Justin and them guys the best of luck, too, I, I appreciate the fact that you were able to let us wait the two weeks so that we could get some of these answers, and I know you gave me my wind chill stuff, and, but I appreciate that, and I know there's a lot of work, a lot of work went into this, and, uh, you know, I know you're going to have the same challenges, you know, keeping the kids, you know, like you said, it's, it's just not your typical football practice, changing in, you know, locker room and running out, and all keeping them together, but I, I know you guys will do a great job, and I wish you the best.
Any other questions? If being none, all those in favor, unanimous, go get them gals.
Good luck, Coach.
All right, a couple of facilities updates, um, the Board of Selectmen did approve to hire the new Director of Facilities, it's, uh, Brian Farriger, uh, he's a Clinton resident and graduate alumni, uh, also went to WPI.
You know how to get that in there.
There it is, there it is.
Therefore elevating his candidacy.
Yeah, wait, let's see how long it was going to take him to throw that in there.
A degree in management, management engineering.
We've had pretty good luck with WPI.
When will he start, Steve?
Uh, I'm not sure the exact start date, I know we were working out with his, um, uh, current company, so I believe it was, I think it was around maybe March eighth, um, but give or take in there, maybe a little earlier, maybe a little later, I just, it was, it was kind of depending on, on what he could give for, for notice there, so, uh, we're excited to have, uh, have Brian start, I think, um, you know, I think, I think what he's going to bring is, is hopefully some more, um, uh, a different, different look at that position in terms of more of the, the big picture, um, and not just, not as much, um, you know, getting bogged down in, in just the day-to-day stuff, but looking more big picture, and, and keeping, keeping things moving on some of the, the capital items and those types of things, so, so we're hoping, I mean, it'll be, uh, it's always a little learning curve, but this is a good time, I think, to come in, where we can kind of, there's already been a budget set for the rest of this year that he can kind of follow, and, and we'll work with him to develop the budget for next year, and, and look at some things like staffing and those types of things, so we're excited to have Bri, uh, Brian, Mr. Farriger, start for us in the coming weeks.
Terrific, great, excellent addition.
Um, the MSBA reached out to us again, la, the Friday right before vacation, uh, they would like us to do a virtual tour, um, so they have sent us a list of areas in the building that they would like to see, uh, I think we're actually going to do a pre-recorded tour, where we, where we just make a video for them, and, and send them the video, um, where we highlight the areas that they wanted to see, and they were specific areas that we kind of brought up, uh, in the, in the study, like the locker rooms, or the boiler rooms, or those types of things, so, so we'll work on that, I think we have to get that to them by, um, I believe March fifth was our cutoff for that, so we have a couple of weeks to try to get that done, but, uh, I think, I don't think it'll be, uh, we'll get some, we'll get some of our tech staff on it, I'm sure we'll be able to, to put, piece something together relatively quickly on that.
Again, that's good news.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, every time they ask you for more information, I think that's, that's good, that means they need it for something, so. Uh, the next two bullets on there, we had the, you know, the old fire station in the central office building, and I know we, we kind of added those. And I know we, we kind of added those. I know the town has their sort of facilities committee that's, whatever they're calling that, that's, that's meeting to kind of look at those properties. And, and so we just wanted to kind of keep those up there in terms of, I think those are two properties that, you know, for obviously the old fire station, you know, there's, I think there's limited use for that building in terms of it's, it's usually, it's probably got to be something associated with the town or, you know, not be used as a building anymore. But, you know, right now it's just sort of, just sitting there kind of decaying. The central office building is, you know, it's, it's, it's a great building, but we have a lot of space there. I know anyone that's, anyone that's seen my office knows that I don't need that big of an office. It's just the way that the, the classrooms were set up, right? So we moved into those types of classrooms. So, you know, I think that we could definitely downsize from that building if we needed to. And I think that that's something that's important to factor into like long-term planning in terms of before we end up making major roofing repairs or boiler repairs or something like that in that central office building. Is that really a building that we need to, to commit to? Or are we better off, say, investing those types of resources in something like the fire station to make that into more of like offices and doing something with the, with the central office building? Since that one is more marketable, probably more valuable in terms of, it could be, you know, sold to a developer or something, something of that nature. So I have no, you know, I don't know. I'm not part of that committee. I think, Mr. Bailey, I don't know if you, you know, you kind of go to those and...
Pretty much nailed it. They just kind of want it on their radar. So if members of the board, and include Steve in this, of course, you know, if have an idea on, you know, what, what you want to do with that, just like Steve just said, let's, you know, just keep it on our radar. I know we, you know, Ed Dival came, it was a year and a half ago or something and asked us and it just kind of, but they are, and that surplus committee is also looking at those other properties. So it would be kind of a package plan or something like that. So if there's anything.
I guess I would just make a point of, have we thought about like where we would house the early child, our early childhood program? And I know that Ed is there too. I'm just wondering what, you know, what that would look like.
Community, Ed.
Yeah. So we got the, yeah, we got the, the Adult Learning Center. I mean, I know, I know at one point the Adult Learning Center ran most of their classes out of.
Middle school.
Or I know they were at the high school, one point when I was teaching at the high school, yeah. You know, so their evening classes probably aren't, it wouldn't be that challenging to find space. They do have a couple of day classes that we could kind of, you know, we'd have to look into. Same thing with the Early Childhood Center, you know, and whether we could, and that's the type of thing where I don't know, you know, whether we could, if, if we were able to, if part of it was able to do something at the fire station, could, could, could maybe Calc and the Early Childhood Center both have a home base in that building so that they, you know, they're, they're kind of headquartered there, but then they could use, you know, different school facilities for their other activities. I also think that's where it becomes part of the surplus property in the big town, the town vision for everything, because I know there are, there's, you know, one of the buildings, I think, that's a conversation up there is the Armory. And having toured the Armory, I think that the Armory might be a, a building that would be a perfect building for the Early Childhood Program to move into if that was something the town was going to, was going to turn into more of like a community center. So there are, you know, so there are, there are different things like that. So that's why I think it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a challenging type problem here because if you just remove any one thing, you sit there and you say, well, what do we do about that then? What do we do about that then? But if we can use it, if we can use all the information to develop sort of a vision for where do we want to go? And if there's a decision that says like, okay, yes, we want to, we want to invest in the Armory, we want to, the town says they want to buy the Armory and they want to fix it up, then now we can start saying, okay, well, part of what you could maybe do is, you know, if we could get part of that area for the Early Childhood Program now, that's one that, that helps solve the problem of what could we do with the central office building down the road? So those are the types of things that I think, you know, certainly I've talked to Laura Taylor and, and about that and just said, you know, we're going to talk about this, but, you know, we're definitely, we'd find a way for, and even if it's, part of it would be maybe integrating more of her play programs into the actual elementary school, which isn't a bad thing either in terms of getting some kids, you know, those younger kids and parents involved in the school, so.
Any other questions with regard to facilities?
So Brendan, at this time, we're just going to keep it on our radar, but you know, they're not looking for anything from us at this point.
Yeah. I mean, unless we hit.
Yeah.
We had some definite, but yeah, I think Steve's, and you know, and he hit on too, you know, you're going to have the facilities director on in, in a couple of weeks and then gets back to that master plan of like, you know, making sure everything fits, so.
Yeah. Thank you for your work representing us with that group and just keep us updated.
Send to the bill.
All right. The next topic was the School Attending Children Report. And so there's a couple of different printouts here. So the School Attending Children Report, essentially, if you're not familiar with the report, Mary puts it together every year and, and it's a lot of, it's a lot of work because what you basically have to do is account for every kid in Clinton. And what they want to do is they want to make sure you know where they go to school and if they're homeschooled and all those types of things. So, and, and every other, every school, every other school district does this too. So for the whole fall, you're either getting emails or letters from districts and asking if you have any kids from their town and you're sending letters to districts or emails to districts. So, so this is our, the first one in there is our, is the one that was submitted January 1st, 2021. It shows our enrollment of 1693, our local enrollment, a total of 2,113 students. And you can see some of the other ones. One thing on note, you can see where it says vocational regional schools, that's all zero. The reason why those are zeroed out is because we do not belong to a regional vocational school district. So all of our vocational school districts, all of our students in vocational school districts are listed as out of district public schools. So you can see that number over there because, because we're technically not a member, we pay the out of district, non-member tuition rate. So if you're wondering where the students attending ASCABET are, they're in that column with out of district public schools. And the reason they're there is because we are not an official member of ASCABET.
And for the next, for the follow-up question, we have looked into it in the past.
Yeah, we have.
It's, it, it, it's just not an option for us right now.
Right. We did kind of ask about it and it wasn't really practical at the time. The, the page after that is just last year's report. So you can see the comparison. You know, we had seven, 1,719 students listed last year, 1693 this year. You can see that the, the number of students homeschooled went up from last year to this year from 10 to 34. That's a fairly consistent trend, a trend that's happening across the state right now with, with COVID. It's a number of parents that have just opted to homeschool so they could just, you know, if their kids are at home most of the time anyway, they're opting for homeschool just to kind of take control over it. And that's fine. We certainly respect that decision and we hope that those parents, if they, if they, if they choose to, will know that they're welcome to send their kids back next year or whenever, if we get a little more, more normal. So that, it's just a comparison there, so you can see that. There's not, not a huge number of changes except that one, I'd say. The third one, the third sheet that you see there that has all the grades listed and total enrollment of 1851, so that's our actual enrollment. So the School Attending Children is only looking at kids who live in Clinton. This is our enrollment. So this also factors in kids who do not live in Clinton, who were school choiced into the school district. If you remember, we closed school choice this year for new students, but we did have students who were already existing. So our total enrollment in the district right now is 1851. There's our breakdown in terms of grades and, and out placements. And then you can see the next page shows our school choice in. Currently, we had 69 students school choicing into the district and those represent the, just the sending districts. And as of right now, we have 101 students school choicing out of the district. Those represent the sending district, the receiving districts. And then our vocational enrollment right now is also at 100. So, which is fairly typical. It's usually around 25 a class. So the, you can see a couple, we don't have many in there, but we have, I know we have one at T E C A and we have three at the Commonwealth Virtual Academy. And those are basically, those are both fully remote schools too. So those are ones that, a lot of those schools have seen an uptick this year in, in schools going there. And then the last page, it kind of looks that same way. Well, the next page, a smaller one, is the charter schools and the homeschool breakdown. And then the last one that shows our special ed, special education, private schools and our collaboratives and then private schools. So that's, that's the report that we put together to kind of track down where everybody goes. So that's, and as I said, they're always a snapshot because that could happen, you know, we do it for January 1st and it could change January 2nd. But, you know, that's just gives you an update on where we are. And then we kind of use some of that information when we're trying to make our projections in terms of, you know, what classes will be next year. So, but it is a, it is kind of a labor-intensive report to put together or a lot, a lot of time. So I do, I think it's important information. We have to share it to the state and thank Mary for all the times and, and detail she puts into it.
Agreed. Thank you, Mary, for all of your, your hard work. It's, it's great to have that level of detail there for us.
A couple of the financial updates for FY22, the FY22 preliminary budget updates. One of the ones we're going to have to look into, I don't have any specific ones for you, but we'll, we'll roll out the next one at the next meeting, probably Budget Version A. But one of the things that we are going to be able to probably make some adjustments to is transportation. If you remember, I had included a, an extra like $200,000 almost in, in additional transportation out of concerns for the bus occupancy. And then they've since come out with that revised transportation guidance. So we probably will not need, at least definitely won't need all of that in there. So we'll probably revisit that at the minimum. And then as we revisit that, if we're taking that transportation out, and remember I was saying that was one of the things we might use out of the ESER grant, that might open some other things, that it might be allowable out of that ESER grant, such as maybe some of the, the technology refresh stuff or even possibly the new S I S if that's an allowable expense. Those might be things we could move to that grant to kind of help reduce the, the kind of operating budget. The other thing we'll probably be able to move out of the preliminary budget is part of the Family Outreach Coordinator salary. I don't want to, I probably don't want to zero it out because I think it's important to keep it as a line item in there. But the second thing on here, the second bullet is the Dawn Award. So that was, Dawn stands for Determination of Needs. It's a grant from the, it was a grant from the hospital, from the Health Alliance, Health Alliance Clinton Hospital. So we had applied on February 26th of 2020, we applied for Level 3 funding to support the Family Welcome Center at Central Office, basically so we could fund the Family Outreach Coordinator position. We had applied for that based on kind of our Student Opportunity Act plan and things we had put together. That, that funding had been delayed. We had to revise proposals based on, you know, the, so we'd do a revised proposal in August. That committee through Clinton Hospital contacted us last week and we were awarded the full amount for Level 3 funding, which was $150,000 over three years. So we have basically $50,000 a year that we can use to, to kind of offset that salary. That essentially was written for us to offset salary for the Family Outreach Coordinator. So like I said, I think it's important not to zero that line item out because I want it to live in the budget, but it doesn't have to be what it is right now because we can offset most of that with this, at least for three years. And the plan being, the way we wrote the application, they want to know what your sustainability plan is for it. So our sustainability plan is that we do need to, we do need to slowly migrate that position into the budget as the Student Opportunity Act funding is phased in over the, the six or seven years that they're going to phase that funding in. So, so that's why I say, keep saying, I think it's important to have, establish the line item, but right now it's in there, I think, for $50,000 and it can be reduced to help offset the budget because of this funding source.
That's great.
Awesome.
So the last thing I have, the tri-council meeting is scheduled for March 8th at 6:30. That'll be a virtual meeting, so we'll set up a fully remote meeting at 6:30 to just kind of walk through sort of the budget with, with all the school councils, like, you know, the one we normally do with, with some food in the library. But just to kind of walk people through at that point and see if there's any, you know, get, let the school council see it. They can see what they, what's included and, and we can get any feedback from them as we continue going through the budget process. So I don't, I, I'm assuming we'd still do our regular meeting like this at like 7:00. So we're probably welcome to kind of just join here and, you know, come here and log on to your Chromebooks. And even if we want to, we could either space out so that we don't interfere with each other or bring headphones or whatever you want to do. So we can, we could just try to, to all maybe all engage remotely for the first half hour and then we could transition to more of this hybrid format for the actual meeting at 7:00. And I think that's all I have.
I think.
That's all?
Do we have, so we, we had a report from facilities. Do we have anything from the other advisory committees for this evening?
Tina, we should probably, we could take it offline, but we should probably get a marketing one on the calendar. I know we talked about that last week and we were, last year, but we're going to wait and do it this year?
Yeah, right. I was actually speaking to Dr. Meyer. We're going to try to get a meeting set where we can all meet with the new cable, I don't know what the position is called.
Cable Director? Is that the position, Mary? Is that what they're calling it? The Cable Director? Executive Director?
Okay. So we thought that would be a good meeting point. So once we can get something established there, I'll send out a note to everybody.
Awesome.
So, so can I ask a tangential question then? And should have asked Mr. Smith when he was still here, but speaking of cable, I agree. I thought the live streaming of the winter athletics was outstanding. Will, will that be happening for fall two as well?
Yeah, that's our plan. We've reached out now that, we'll have to figure out the logistics. And we, we've started looking into the logistics of making it possible from our own press box. Obviously, if the games are going to be, if we're going to have to play it like Neshoba, we're going to have to probably work with Neshoba for the logistics to, you know, connect to the internet right from, right from the press box or something over there. Because you don't want to, it's always better to kind of hardwire those, those feeds instead of trying to use the, the Wi-Fi. So, so we'll see. But I mean, I think that, that's our intent. And honestly, talking to, you know, Mr. Sarmak and, and Mr. Smith, I think, I think we realized that this is something we've been trying to move towards for years now. And it's another one of those things that, that COVID didn't give you a choice, you just had to get it done.